I'm sure you sit there and, but I never, I'm at, I think that's fine. You can sit where you want to get out more.
BJ?
Yes, sir.
Would you lead us?
Of course I would.
Roll call. Tim?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Judy?
Here.
BJ?
Yes, sir.
Janet?
Yeah.
Is Dennis here?
Yep.
I think that should be it. Let's see. Agenda for August 16. Is there any changes?
I would like to add to it, Mr. Mayor, town equipment.
Okay. That's under old, new?
New.
Okay, let's put town equipment as the first one. Okay.
Ron, have somebody else read it, because you can't.
Nick told Mr. Mayor's meeting minutes for July 11, 2024.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the mannequins at the last meeting?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh... Pay bills.
No, we got one for that.
Do I? What is it?
Mannequins.
Oh, meeting mannequins from July 11. Do I have a motion to approve the mannequins?
I would so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Pay bills. Do I have a motion to...
A motion to pay bills?
Do I have a second?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh... Clerk? Can you report?
Okay, um, so I will just report the balances of all of the accounts right now. In our general account, we have fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-five cents. In our police account, we have fifty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. In our community fund, we have sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and six cents. In our court account, we have twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and eighty-nine cents. And in our enterprise water account, we have thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay. Court, Janet?
Oh, okay. Hi. You guys have the, your report, so it was the payments, total payments. The payment in July was fifty thousand, eight oh seven, and that got transferred to the town today. Um, you see the citations that have been written, um, and what payments have come in. Let's see. Court is Friday, away from today, August 23rd. There were three bench trials, but now there's nine. We have a couple of call-ins, just those grants that are coming in. BJ and I had two meetings with Hightower Technologies on the e-citation program, and they're right now building a database, and hope to have some reporting version ready for us to look at sometime in October. That may be optimistic. And I still have a few things to get to, and then get our street list and something else. And that's it.
Thank you. Maintenance, water, sewer, man.
Everything's going well. I'd like to thank the public that attended, uh, uh, cleanup and beautification of the park. We had a great day that day. We got a lot done. Sprinkler systems are working well, underground systems are working well. Grass is coming in like a vantage. We'll probably mow it in about ten days. It'll be the first mow we do. It's looking good over there. Uh, no water main breaks, no, uh, nothing to speak of. We, we... Boy, he's not good when you lose your train of thought.
No, pardon?
I said, he's not good when you lose your train of thought.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah. Bill, you don't know anything about that. Anyway, everything's going good. Everything's looking good. We've been weed-eating the streets, handling weed eaters. One thing I'd like to do is I would like to, uh, thank Ms. Burry for, she donated a lawnmower to the town. She donated a three-wheeled weed eater to the town. It wasn't running right. We took it in, we got it running right. But Judy, thank you for going after the town. That was very kind. It runs very well now, and that saved us probably a little over a grand, so thank you very much. Other than that, Mr. Mayor? I've got nothing else to report. Oh, I do too. We're taking a side-by-side in on the 27th of August. We're gonna have that front end realigned. We're gonna have new tires put on the front end. Uh, we talked about that four or five meetings ago. We've just been so busy, we haven't got to it. But it is going in on the 27th. BJ, I need to get with you so I can get you the tire sizes on the front again.
I gave it to him yesterday.
Did you?
Yesterday.
Okay. So we're in good shape. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah.
Water board?
Uh, during the pass to the, here in the last meeting, for, uh, your raise and all that sort of venture.
Yeah.
We are going to purchase a, looking at purchasing a billion invasion. Going to the water board meeting this next week or the Tuesday if you want.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Mr. BJ, please.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to check to see if we were still on the state non-compliant list. Does anybody know anything about that? Okay, we're supposed to have that grant coming in next month, I believe.
Until those reports are done, we're not.
What's that? I didn't hear that.
Till the F-66 is completed, we're not.
Okay.
And that is getting worked on. I have to wait till they get counts reconciled, um, and then that'll get done.
Okay. So I think, when do we get that home security grant? That September or October?
Whenever they get their funding.
Okay. So, yeah.
But we do have that. Oh, I guess I should put a sentence on, came in yesterday. The calls out for the current YDOT grant is in October, and so...
We're all cut.
We won't get, we won't get that funding if we're still on non-compliance.
So the grant funding for, um, homeland security, then also the grant funding for like the, our DOI time and our occupancy strain time that we've put in for, so I just wanted to check on that. So we can get reimbursed for those things. Reimbursed for the, the YDOT grant, and then get funding for the homeland security grant. Um, we got a few calls from Dana Safety. We had this invoice that you guys, the, the council approved, I think back in April? And it still hasn't been paid yet?
It's in the bills.
It's in the bills, okay. Perfect. Just wanted to check on that. Um, the fuel tank's a little low. Want to see if we can get that filled up. I think we're less than a quarter or so, and sometimes it gets like that, that giggles kind of fast. Um, we are losing two officers. Steve Coleman resigned a couple of weeks ago. He's gonna go work for Level Police Department and be their sergeant. And then Jeff Newell also resigned. He's been working quite a bit for Washington County Sheriff's Office, and he volunteers for the fire department there, search and rescue, so he's just out of time. I told him he needs to retire and just retire and enjoy his life, but he's, he likes to stay busy, I guess. So, I mean, those two guys are very valuable to our community, to our police department, so I just want to publicly thank them for all that they did. I mean, Jeff was huge with our grants, with rewriting our policies, with doing backgrounds. I mean, he was the brains behind the operation, so he's got like thirty-five, forty years of knowledge, so it's, it'd be a huge loss to not have him. And then Steve, the same way. He brought a lot of knowledge and expertise in for the, for the town, and he'll be missed as well, so.
I'd like to give both a big round of applause.
And that being said, um, it'd be nice to keep the officer Newman that we have and also Janet. Um, I know I asked last month for raises, which we put in the budget at five percent, so for all of us, I'm not worried about myself. It'd be nice if Steve and, uh, Janet could get a, get a raise. Um, like I said, they do a lot of work, and I mean, Janet's huge in our operation as well, so with grants and with the court stuff and, um, except just with the cost of living, it'd be nice if they were able to get a bump in their pay, so we'd appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Renewal of building permit, Barley and Sharon?
Yeah, I'm not so sure why my name is on it, but...
Just because you were gonna be the one that spoke, was going to speak for him. I put your name on there.
Makes sense. So yeah, can we get the building permit renewed?
I see no problem renewing the building permit.
All those in, or do I have a motion to renew it?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Should I give you the twenty-five tonight, or?
Whenever.
Yeah, you or I can come get it next week if you want me to, doesn't matter.
You can just make that to me if you want.
It's cash.
Even better.
New business, license plate renewal. Oh, I'm sorry. Town equipment.
Well, basically, as, as everybody knows, is our tractor is a little over thirty-year-old, and it's starting to get pretty weak, it's starting to get old, it's starting to get growing old again. And so I started looking into tractors and investigating what they would cost and all that, so I could bring to the council. I did find one, it was a Kubota, uh, 2018, uh, two hundred hours on that tractor, which is not even broken in, two hundred hours. And it had four attachments, it had a box blade, it had the front-end motor, it had the brush hog, and it had the blade, so you got a box blade, blade, weed eater and everything else. And they were asking sixteen for that, which is, the tractor new, runs about thirty-three, thirty-four. But come to find out, it was supposed to be a thirty horsepower tractor. It's a twenty-three. Twenty-three's too small for us. So, what I'd like to bring to the council's attention tonight is, we can probably, according to tractor guys, is get between six and eight out of ours. So, and we've got a clutch going out of it, which is gonna be between six and eight thousand, so get rid of it before the clutch goes out. If we can find one for under thirty, I think that it's gonna behoove us to go ahead and move on it, because nothing's coming down, everything's going up in prices, we all well know. So, that's one thing that, that we need to take a really, really, really hard look at. And the other thing is, is as everybody knows in the audience and as a council knows, is we did put a new irrigation system in the park. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go over and look at it and see how it works. It's a cats meow. I mean, it is wonderful. Two sets and the park's done, instead of pulling hoses all week. So, but doing that, we've saved a ton of man-hours, uh, uh, which is important right now with our direct distribution, the way it's been cut. We've gotta find different ways that we can save all the man-hours we can save. The other thing is, the council approved going ahead and doing railway with the remaining monies that we have left from City Park. We approved that last meeting or meeting four, I forget when it was. But I got to investigate that a little bit too, and, and I, after, after visiting with Irrigation King, which is pipe guys, sprinkler guys, everything else, years ago, we bought a reel. And, uh, that reel worked real well, but the one that we ordered was, and we didn't order, I'll rephrase that. The council approved a water reel for railway, railway in the park, or not the park, but the entry we've done here. We bought it, but when the, when it, when it was ordered, it was ordered the smaller one. What's, it was all right, it still worked, but it didn't work the way that the bigger one would have worked, so we can get a, a water reel, and basically, for anybody that don't know what that is, it's, it's those that, they've got anywhere from six hundred feet to twelve hundred feet of two-inch pipe on a reel. And then it's got a big sprinkler head that's on wheels. And basically, you pull it over with a Kubota, the tractor, let's just say railway, you pull it over there. You set it where you want it. You take and you put a chain on the, the sprinkler head. You pull it out, whether it's, like I say, six hundred, twelve hundred, whatever feet. Then you go ahead and you turn your pump on, and what happens is it's got a, a motor on that that reels it in, like an, uh, irrigation system, a pivot. So it reels it in as it goes, and it senses when it's wet enough to go ahead and move it. But by doing that, again, we're, we're looking at man-hours and different things like that, uh... To move the pipe, to, to set the pipe up, to put new rubbers in it every year, gasped rubbers, to continuously change out the sprinklers, you've gotta wire every piece of pipe together, otherwise it comes apart. Then you've gotta continue wiring it throughout the summer. And then by the time you're done paying for all your sprinklers and your, your, uh, rubbers for it, for the pipe, then you've gotta move it again at the end of the year, and you've gotta put it back in the yard. So, I guess what I'm trying to say to the council and to the public is, is we can do that for between ten and twelve thousand dollars, which will pay for itself in the first year versus putting underground pipe in, which is, you know, the trench rig, two hundred and fifty bucks a day, it's the labor, it's, uh, maintaining what we've gotta maintain, and those two areas are a lot bigger than City Park. City Park worked out well for what we've done. Worked out wonderful. So that's the second thing that I'd like to bring to the council's attention tonight, is one item's really needed, the other one is gonna save a truckload of money for whichever administration's in here next year.
Now, one, one thing you forgot to mention is, uh, it takes about twelve man-hours a week eating around all of the irrigation pipe a week.
Yeah.
So you're, you're saving about twelve hours a week, man-hours, plus the weed eater equipment.
Gasoline.
Gasoline. Any, any comments, or?
Where's the money coming from? Because we're pretty close to the margin right now.
It would, it would, we've got a community fund, which is for the betterment of the community, and it's gonna be for the betterment of the community, so I would say it should come out of that.
And, uh, there, there's another thing you forgot. Everything, you know, everything goes together good. We've got, oh, what, five, six thousand dollars worth of pipe and fittings to, to sell that we won't need anymore.
So let's just, let's just say, for example, it costs, let's use a high number, twelve grand. Let's use that number, for example, with, by selling the irrigation pipe, all the fittings, everything else. Uh, I don't know, does anybody in the house know what aluminum's going for now, if we have to sell it for scrap? So the pipe's in pretty good shape. I mean, we got some bad pipe, there's no doubt about it. It's still very usable as irrigation pipe, uh, but if, if we're gonna sell it as irrigation pipe, it could be sold as aluminum crap, whatever that's worth today, and I have no clue.
Council, any comments?
Anyhow, there's, if there's no comments on that, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and, if we can find a tractor that at one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we go ahead and purchase it, go ahead and get a, uh, water wheel for the two entryways, still leaving all the man-hours.
Second?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
You want that first?
No, it's fine.
Do we wanna vote Don's second or his pair? Don't really matter. So I got a motion in a second. Julie, comments?
No. Aye. Aye.
That's it? Just go on aye?
Just go on aye? Okay, well, let's, let's do it this way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm gonna leave that up to Tim and Judy. If you find something, report back to the rest of us, and we'll go ahead and agree it, agree to it, or disagree to it, or you...
It should be Tim, Judy, and Julie, because Julie might run across the farm.
Let's put the three.
Cause I know so many of them.
Let's put the three of you, because I'm not gonna get out and do it.
Jack's around that kind of stuff all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody in the audience runs across anything that's within those parameters, then let us know.
What exactly are you looking for?
Uh, it's gonna be between a thirty and a forty horsepower tractor. Uh, we'd like to have some of the attachments with it, Chris. Uh, anything under thirty's just not gonna work. We've got a twenty-five right now, and if we had five to seven horsepower more, that would be great. And we had fifteen horsepower more, that'd be great. But, uh, we've got a brush hog for that little one, but that brush hog, when it was purchased, was way too big for that tractor. And so, you know, if, if we could find one in those parameters, that, that thirty-five or forty, that would be absolutely fantastic.
Cause I, I go to Riverton every Tuesday in Sheridan.
Yeah, look for us if you would. If you would, absolutely. We'd appreciate that.
Kubota and John Deere and whatever you happen to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
That new home's been awful good. It's treating the town pretty good. I mean, you, well, it's been rebuilt twice, so you gotta understand that, that home has been rebuilt twice.
So now we're... License plate renewal.
Basically, I've got the paper on that, we've just gotta fill it out, and we've gotta get it sent in. It's for our exempt plates on all our vehicles. So, Michelle, can you go ahead and get that done?
I just need to know which ones are that list that's, and you know what we still have and what we don't have.
Okay.
So if you could just come in and tell me what we do have, what we don't have out there, and I can get started.
Sounds like a winner.
You know, while you're on license plates and equipment, it's not on the agenda, but next meeting, I wanna get a list together and go through and get all of this equipment that we don't need and get it out of there. So, everybody be thinking, and I'll try to get a list together, and we'll, I, I, we've gotta fit it out for bids, but let's get rid of that. It's just sitting there, it's collecting dust, it's not being used. Some of it, generators, pump, never been used. Brand new, sitting there for fifteen years.
Yeah, I'll help you on that. Howard and I worked on the generators in the pump yesterday.
To get them?
I'm real proud to say we're one out of three. So we got one out of three working. Uh, we got the pump working, and it works well. Neither generator, we worked on it for, pulled them for a couple hours, we couldn't get them to fire. One's a diesel generator and one's a gas generator. Uh, we took the battery, good battery, out of, out of the diesel one, we put it in there, and we can't even get it to click. So, you know, I don't know, and something to think about is if we wanna sell those, do we wanna sell them as is, or do we wanna run them first? We'd probably sell them a lot better than for a lot more money if they're running first. So, that's something that we'll talk about next meeting.
Yeah, and then there's a big dual-stage contractor air compressor. The, I don't, I don't think it's ever been started.
We've got finish mowers, we've got, uh, brush hogs, we've got off-hands, things like that.
So what's, council, be thinking about that? Next on the agenda, what's like Wham Cat?
Michelle, when is Wham Cat?
It's Tuesday to Friday, September 10 through 13. That cuts for college.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and prove Michelle to go to that, and again, uh, whether it's a new council or the old council, or whatever, she needs to go to that, it's, uh, well worth its time and money.
Julie, would you be in the...
No, because it's for the clerk's work.
Okay. So I would go ahead and make a motion to approve, which y'all gonna make it.
Do I have a second?
That's second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Where are we? Mayor's comments? Right now, I don't have any. Let's go to the public comments.
I have not seen your budget. Could you direct me to where you guys have posted your budget? Cause I have not, I've searched a couple times, and I've not seen it anywhere.
Michelle, I'll give you printed off all we need, just print it off.
It's sitting on my desk waiting for Roger to send it, but it's already been sent to the state people, too.
Do you have it tonight? Where you leave?
Okay, we just have to be publicly posted.
Right.
After I've signed it, I can make a copy for you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Gosh, is this gonna be a quick meeting? Any other comments?
I'm not sure how to. Of course, I spoke with him about it, but I wanted to know if the people that have access to our personal information, if there were privacy laws, if you take any kind of a security awareness force yearly and sign off on completion of it, because I don't have any names. I mentioned it online. Our public information, our private information was shared in public by a council member, and that's against the law, and I just wanted to mention that to you and me. And also, being that what I learned from it is, there's people that are struggling, and I forgot to bring it with me. I was gonna go, well, I was gonna go to the library and print it off, so I can give you a copy of it, but there is, because I did some research, because it brought it to my attention, because I always think, uh, the best way to handle something you're naming it is with something positive. You get what I mean? And I don't have any feelings towards this person. I think that if, I don't think she had any personally against the list that she was naming off. I think this is, this is how this person treats people. And I don't have any feelings towards this person, I think that if, I don't think she had any personally against the list that she was naming off, I think this is, this is how this person treats people. And it's probably an internal issue, it says more about them than it does the people that she was, that this person is speaking with. Um, you know what I'm saying, that's no issue altogether, but I think, cause you're the mayor, and also I'm very glad to see that you're okay. I didn't know what was going on, I thought it was your neck, I've had two eye operations, so I understand that. Something's going on with your eyes, so I hope that you're, you're doing good. And I just wanna say, I don't know, I hope you're running again, if you're not running again, I would like to nominate your brother.
No, you, you got time, you're, I, I'm not running.
Oh, you're not?
No.
Oh, okay, well, I don't know if I can nominate anybody for mayor, but I think you're, who's the big brother, I don't know, but.
I'm bigger, he's smaller, he's older, I'm younger.
Whatever these may be, and also I think it would be nice if we could have like, uh, like to, it can be a little informal, doesn't have to be like the Washington drama people, if we could just have like a grill out or something at the park, we can all pitch in and just let all the candidates speak about, you know, what they wanna do for the town and.
We, uh, you know, in, in this forum, we can't discuss that, uh.
I don't know.
We can't discuss politics.
Can I be your name, please, ma'am?
Uh, I mean, my formal name or what I go by?
Whatever I put in the paper, I'm gonna vote you, so whatever name you want you to send the paper to, put.
Everybody knows me as Nicole, my family called me Nicole, my first name is Elizabeth, and it's Cody, like well, Bill. My like husband. Yeah, you can do that, cause nobody's gonna know your part about, I think my son called to check on me, because he couldn't get a homey close, he's not on his son's, cause he's working, and he called the Highway Bar and Cafe, and I'm pretty sure that Tim talked to him, because Barbie was like, does anybody know I'm Nicole? And he's like, I saw her at the Dollar Tree, she's funny, so thank you for that, by the way, my son's.
Will you answer your question on, uh, what, what kinda classes you're seeing?
A security awareness course, this is something I do, I, I have to do it every year because I have access to all kinds of information. That's privacy, if private information, that is not to be publicly shared, um, there are, you can be fined or jailed for that. I mean, I'm not saying I wanna throw anybody in, I'm just saying that it needs to be brought to the attention of anyone that has access to personal private information, and not to be shared in a vote forum. I'd also like to say that I would like the Highway Bar and Cafe to get lots of business and stay open, because you guys know how long it was closed down for. We want that business to thrive, when you walk into a business and you witness toxic behavior, it doesn't exactly encourage you to return, even though it has nothing to do with the business.
Okay, I tried, I was gonna answer your question. And the, the, everybody, whether it's this council, or everybody, whether it's an incoming council, has all got to do those courses, and those courses are ethics courses, uh.
I didn't know if you had anything like that in place, and I just thought I would let you know, so you can take this and plan your action and do whatever needs to be done amongst your, oh, I'm not one to cause drama. I always think it's a positive way to handle things, and I just don't want that happening, this is a small town.
Anyhow, again, again, uh, everybody's gotta take the course, so everybody on this council's taking that course.
Okay.
Uh, you've got incoming new council, they're gonna have to take that course too. Uh, and in that course, it includes ethics, uh, it includes money handling, it includes all the things that, whether you're.
Everything will cover, it's including privacy issues, I just didn't know if you guys did anything like that, I don't work for big government per se.
Just like I was telling you, is, is all that's in place to the state, that's gotta be done prior to sending any of these chairs. And that, not prior to, but it's gotta be done within a year, once you're elected or, or whatever.
It's like yearly, yeah, I do the same thing, I just pull the date.
And it's a three-day course.
It's not a course.
Oh, it's not?
No, we, we, we got in on the end of the.
Yeah, why did you? What is it now?
It's nine hours, I think, Janet, how long was it?
It's online.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's online, I know, it's like, wah, 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 I've heard it so many times, but.
Okay.
Anybody, anybody, I look, like I said, my mayor, just mayor, anybody can look at the course, it's, it's available to the public on the state of the land.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the cabinet website. So, you can go there, go to the site, you can open the course.
Okay.
And about the water thing, do you guys have an email, do you have an email? Okay, I just think it would be a good idea, rather than a council member out in public talking about stuff they shouldn't be, is to actually help people, you don't throw dirty water under them, at them when they're done on their luck, you help them adjust their ground. I mean, this is just how I think, it's good for the community and unity and collaboration. Now, I did some research, and I found a thing that will help people with their water bill. And it's an online, I don't know if I could somehow relay that information to you, so you can maybe find a way to get it to people? Because that's good for everybody, they got the water bill paid, you guys got the money to pay the bills, I mean, it's, it's a win-win.
I can give you my email after the meeting.
And then, cause I forgot, I was gonna print it out and give it to you, but it's actually online anyway, so. I just haven't made it down there.
Get with me after the meeting, I can get you my email.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for your comments, yes.
Mr. Mariner, Nathan, uh, with your last meeting, I overheard Lisa's name brought up on the bill. Through the discussion of it, it was going to get paid, but you ended up taking a motion on the floor to pay bills except for that bill.
Okay, now, now, before you go any further, let, let me explain it to you. Anytime we have something like that, I'm going to find out before we pay them, number one. Number two, the, the charge on that card was, uh, fee for the card.
Fifteen dollar, well.
I don't, that's irrelevant.
So, the, the card is ripped up.
Thank you.
It's been in the safe, it's never been out of.
Irrelevant, the only thing I'm bringing up is you took a motion on the floor to pay all bills except for that one credit card.
And it's being paid.
It had been paid.
I don't think what, what, uh, Anthony understood is, the only charge that was on that.
Parliamentary procedures.
Was it, and the whole monthly, wasn't it?
It was skipped.
Go ahead and talk on what you think.
It's just parliamentary procedures was skipped, because you took a motion on the floor to pay all bills except for that one, and you went ahead and paid it.
Okay, well, we'll take that under advisement, and then.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No comments, thus, adjourned to executive session, personnel issue. The time is, I can't see it.
Seven ten.
Seven ten. Call feeding back order. What time? That's seven, work, work. Um, in executive session, we made no decision on, we're, we're looking at a program for the computer, and there's personnel issues involved in it, but from switching it from desktop to the cloud, or vice versa, we are going to get more information on it, and no, no decisions have been made. And on personnel issues, uh, Michelle has been with us for ninety days, over ninety days. We appreciate the work she's doing. And we told her we would evaluate and give her a raise this evening, uh, is, is what was agreed to before. So, to start with, do I have a motion to give Michelle a raise?
I'll make that motion to give Michelle a raise, and I'll make the motion a little further now, I'll make the motion to give Michelle a two-dollar an hour raise.
Okay, I have a motion for two-dollar an hour raise, do I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. I think that's all on the agenda. Thank you, everybody, for coming, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Do I have a second? I guess I'll stay all night, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming, next regular meeting, uh, September, oh-oh.
Twelve.
It's September twelfth, but I don't know that I'll be here, because I'm having surgery September twelfth.
You wanna move it to September tenth, is that Tuesday?
You need to, uh, appoint a new mayor for ten.
I need to, to appoint a new mayor for ten, it's not on our agenda, we closed, we need to get, uh, Troy's resignation. Uh, all of that will be done at the next meeting. I won't be, or, I won't say it's him, I won't say I won't be here on the twelfth of September, our next meeting. I'm, I'm having surgery that day, I don't know how long it's gonna last. Do you guys wanna move that meeting?
If they're having surgery that day, yeah. Before.
Let's wait and she wears it out, we can, we can post that.
Post it the week before. So the next meeting is in September twelfth, that will, everybody will be notified when the meeting is. Michelle can put it out there for us. So, meeting adjourned.
Well, just, I just have one small thing, this doesn't have, is it possible to have somebody, maybe they all can do it again? Uh, clean the, uh, town hall before work next week?
Let me.
Because with the election and lots of people coming and going, it's gonna be a hell of a mess.
I agree with you one hundred percent, but Gail done some work, and there's been some growling going around town. She gave me her check back, ripped it up, and I'm going to suggest, and it's gonna be up to you people out here, she needs paid for the work she does. So, does everybody agree that she should be paid, or do we expect her to do everything for nothing?
No, she should get paid, obviously.
Obviously, she should get paid.
Well, they're screaming nepotism, it's not nepotism. Someone wants to come in and clean.
Gail, if you wanna come in and clean, and if you will sit down with me, or better yet, sit down with Judy and discuss that last check, uh, I wanna reissue a check, and you guys can sit down, discuss what, what's fair, but you're, you're going to have to take the money, cause nobody else is doing anything for free here. So, you sit down with Judy and, and put a figure on that, give it to Michelle, and she can make out the check. And would you please come in and give a thorough cleaning before election? And, and I would even suggest before every court, she come in and, and clean it up, so we have a clean court. So if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.